To order. Yes, please. The scene. Buffalo, here. Clanton.
Present.
Gabriel.
Present.
Jordan.
Here.
Martin. Present. Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the business agenda?
I move that we adopt the business agenda. No, we were going to modify it.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Well, Dr. Martin.
Yes.
And Mr. Clanton, I might need some assistance here. I know we were, due to time, we're trying to modify the agenda right now. So is there, is there some clarification on the points that we want to make sure that we achieve on the business agenda?
I would like to try to get through it as quickly as possible and...
All of it?
Yeah, so we have one, two, three, four, maybe not the policy, I guess.
Well, the, oh, I have to point out, on the policy there is a specific policy that does need to be read out that Dr. Poole needs to, because we need to have a first and second on that particular one. I'd like to make the recommendation, Dr. Martin, if possible, if we could limit the presentation and discussion on particular items before us, because we're at 11:51 now, if we could do with them within 15-minute increments, we should be able to get through everything if we could hold ourselves to that. With presentation and Q and A.
Let's just, I would, I don't...
I mean, some may need more, but I'm just saying if we kind of use that as a target, then that's for ourselves and what's being presented.
I agree with that, because I'd like to try to get through it.
Let's just go, let's just move.
It's been moved and then seconded, so roll call then.
Please call the roll.
Okay.
The scene. Hi. Buffalo.
Hi.
Clanton.
Hi.
Gabriel.
Hi.
Jordan.
Hi.
And Martin. Hi. Okay, wonderful. And let's dive right in. We have the superintendent's report.
So, good afternoon, everyone. I know we're having our hybrid meeting today, but we do have a video report that we would like to share with you, and it's not as long as the video reports have been. And so Karen, if you could have them... Nobody got Karen, nobody got me, where's Karen? Okay.
Ready for the next thing.
We're ready for the report.
All right, channel 47.
Thank you.
You can roll the tape.
Over 500 elementary students spent four weeks of their summer learning and having fun at Camp Einstein. The camp, which is for students working at or above grade level, was designed to keep students engaged over the summer and expose them to a variety of subjects they wouldn't experience during the school year.
It's really important because I think it gives them an idea of what they are interested in. So we try to give them all these different experiences, and we tie the community into it and show them, like, something they're interested in could go really far and build into a career. So that's what we're really trying to get them to do, is explore where their interests could take them further in life.
Students chose three courses that interested them the most out of the more than 20 that were offered at the camp.
So what we're doing is, we're doing what we call the design cycle. So we're doing what you, the traditional egg drop experiment, which they come up with, like, the challenges of getting an egg to the ground safely. And as a team, they come up with the challenges, and they, they come up with a prototype of an idea about a way to do it. And through the, through the design cycle, then they're able to work this problem out.
So right now, it's reptile week, so we have a corn snake named Tangerine, who is six years old. And so we started off by doing a video on our corn snakes and some facts about them. And we usually do our critter time, which they're doing now, getting to hold and feel and touch the snake. I love it, I love it. I usually am like, oh, I need my break, but this just brings me so much joy and see how much they just enjoy learning about animals. And I've learned so much about animals, and they've even taught me some things, so I just love it.
Approximately 60 students from Norfolk Technical Center had the opportunity to be interviewed for potential jobs, thanks to a partnership with the City of Norfolk and the Hampton Roads Workforce Council. The Technical Center welcomed over two dozen employers for the first-ever Hire Our Grads event, which enabled them to speak with several qualified seniors and hopefully offer them positions right on the spot.
These extraordinary students have spent the last two to four years going through core content as well as CTE programs, whether it's health, STEM, trades in industrial, business and information technology. So now they're coming together so they can get a job. And we are hiring for full-time jobs with benefits to ensure our students are post-secundarily successful.
It's been great. We've interviewed two young people, and they both have some chef skills and the interest in manufacturing. And so we're looking forward to bringing them back to the factory and interviewing them there. It is fabulous. It is great to be able to meet them, and they're bright young people. They're really enthusiastic, it's been very positive.
This is why I do this, right? This is why I'm in education, this is why I'm on the committee, to see that when you're engaging and when you're, you know, bringing resources to students, how they're, one, so grateful that this can happen, but seeing how they're being successful, like, it's, it's working.
These excited students were thrilled at the chance to be hired before graduation and grateful for all they have learned from the district's career and technical education program.
It's the first time they're doing this, I was really happy with this. So me personally, I won't have to go out and go look for a job, and it takes them a long time to get in contact with me and stuff like that, or it takes them about two, three weeks, when you can get one right now, just come right now and get a job.
My interviews went very, very well. I didn't expect it to go so good. I got offered a lump sum of money that I've never even seen before.
NTC has prepared me, like, over the board, top soft skills, communication, just like hands-on work, period. I don't think I would be, like, be able to be this far without Norfolk Technical Center, so yeah.
21 students from Norfolk Public Schools celebrated being successfully hired by local companies and the military for full-time jobs during the first signing day ceremony at Slover Library. It was an exciting follow-up to the district's first Hire Our Grads interview day at Norfolk Technical Center. This partnership between NPS, the City of Norfolk, and the Hampton Roads Workforce Council connected graduating students with employers looking for their specific skillsets.
This event was one that took literally months in the making, but what it's really about is trying to actually partner and align the job opportunities that we know that exist in this great market with the talent and the students that we know are here as well. Collaboration is key. Again, there's no one organization that can do this type of work. So most importantly, of course, Norfolk Public Schools, they have the students, right? They have the talent. They know about the criteria and the education that they're providing the students.
Well, for me, you know, I already know that I'm getting a good qualified candidate because of the education and the training that they receive, so it's a win-win. So it took a lot of the middle person out of it, because they were already doing hands-on, which a lot of times is fresh out, they don't really get. But the fact that they were so in-depth with their training, it was definitely a win-win for Centella.
The Norfolk Technical Center has helped me for the last two years get on my license and certificates through the school and basically give me a jump start on my life and getting my career going. It's a great path for all students to take and get a good head start if they don't want to go to college, or, you know, if they don't know exactly what they want to do. They'll teach you from scratch, and then by the end of the two years, you'll know exactly what you want to do and how to do it and further your career.
Students 5,000 miles apart shared their experiences during the pandemic at a special ceremony at the Richard A. Tucker Memorial Library. The Academy of International Studies at Rosemont partnered with the Norfolk Sister City Association to create a book of 35 student essays entitled Voices of COVID: A Middle-Schooler's Perspective. This event, which celebrated student reflections, featured students reciting their essays from Tim McGanna, along with NPS students reading their own essays and the essays of older students.
The book is amazing, because it's a true reflection of their feelings, and it's really an opportunity for them to be thoughtful at a moment that was challenging, but at the same time giving them an opportunity to see light and to see hope in things that are coming ahead.
It was about how COVID impacted me when I was in school, outside of school, and my social life, and how education changed for me. I learned that everyone had different outlooks on how COVID affected them and how COVID did affect them, and especially cultural difference within Ghana, of how it affected them there. It was, seemed a lot more restricted there and is more impactful.
To read them, it was definitely an experience that I, I could relate to, because I also went through COVID. So seeing another student, even if they're older than me, write something about it, it was, I could relate to it, yeah. Definitely different from an adult's perspective, because we don't have as much of a voice. So it was nice to get that voice.
60 Granby High School students were recognized for their accomplishments during the International Baccalaureate and National Honor Society Senior Ceremony. This special event gave families a chance to celebrate this achievement together, and it also enabled the graduates to reflect on all they've learned and endured over the past four years.
They will be called to the stage, we get to announce their college or post-graduation choice, and then their parent will put their stole or cord around their neck, and the student will present their family with a flower as a thank you for their hard work, too. It's a lot of work. They have worked hard in the school and in their communities, and it's nice to be here to celebrate them.
It feels awesome, just purely awesome. I, I can recall all the sweat and blood that went into this. I had many sleepless nights, and at the end of the day, it was worth it. What I love most about being in IB is that it's not just about how you're going to improve yourself in your career, it's also about how you improve your mindset and how you look at the world.
It feels so good. I've been thinking about this moment for a long time, and to think that I've actually gone through all the work and all these assignments and all the essays and have actually come here, it just feels absolutely amazing. I've definitely learned not to procrastinate. I've learned a lot of study skills, and, I mean, this moment here is just a testament to not giving up and just keep moving forward and working hard.
Norfolk Technical Center's night school celebrated 13 cosmetology students as they graduated from the program. These proud graduates came from a variety of backgrounds, but they all chose NTC because of its solid reputation, thanks to Becky Malott, who's diligently taught the course for 38 years.
It's always exciting. It's tough for me, because I've got them, they're good, we get close, and then they're gone. So it's a little tough for me, and always is, every year graduation. They're interested, they, they want this, they know that the career is going to set them just exactly the way they need to be.
I heard that they have a good program, and it's also where my parents came here to get their license. Very good, it's very fun, and it's a very friendly school. Hairstyling runs in the family, so I want to pursue that.
It gave you all of the tools that you need, like, it gave you everything that I would be asking in the salon. You know, you don't want to go show up at, to do somebody's makeup and all your tools are a mess, or, you know, you haven't sanitized, or, you know, you don't know what type of pins to use for the curl design. So it's, it's given you all of the tools that you need to go out and to achieve whatever your dream is.
A good time was had by all, as Norfolk Public Schools recognized retiring employees with a much-deserved luncheon aboard the Spirit of Mount Vernon. While cruising along the Elizabeth River, retirees were presented with a certificate recognizing their years of service, followed by some spirited line dancing.
I was the best custodian I could be. I love my job. I love cleaning for the kids. I started out with the little ones, and then I went to the big ones, but it was all so well worth it, just knowing that I could be there for the children.
concludes my video report, thank you.
Does a lot of great things. I'm so excited about that signing and highlighting the technical students. That is really something special, and I can't wait to see how that continues, that'll be great.
So 21 students were able to secure employment after that event.
Yay! Okay. Up next, we have, do we have anyone here for a second comment?
That's why I ran out to get the book. We do not have any speakers as of today.
Okay, thank you. And sup, we have approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel, and Mr. Clanton.
Seconded.
The scene.
Hi.
Buffalo.
Hi.
Clanton.
Hi.
Gabriel.
Hi.
Jordan.
Hi.
And Martin. Hi. So the consent agenda has passed. Our first presentation is the academic state of the schools, Dr. Poole. How are you today?
I'm doing well, how about you guys?
Great.
All right, 15 minutes.
I know you can do it. I have faith in you.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Ms. Buffalo, members of the Board, and Dr. Bertson. I'm here this afternoon, or, yep, this afternoon to share the academic state of schools through the data review of PALS, STAR, and preliminary SOL data. Before we begin with the preliminary SOL data review, I wanted to note a few highlights of student success. Based on the preliminary SOL scores, 11 schools are projected to improve their annual pass rates in all tested areas for the all-student group. They are Booker T. Washington High School, Camp Allen, J Cox, James Monroe, Lindenwood, Ocean View, Richard Bowling, St. Helena, Terrleton, and Taylor Elementary Schools. J Cox and Lindenwood are projected to achieve a Level 1 in math, which would allow both schools to clear their four-year tags. Three schools improved their reading annual pass rates in all active subgroups. Those would be J Cox, James Monroe, and Lindenwood, while five schools did so in math: J Cox, Lindenwood, Ocean View, Terrleton, and Taylor. Additionally, Coleman Place is projected to be a newly accredited school for the 23-24 school year. So let's begin the review of informal, unofficial preliminary SOL data. As we move into this portion of the data review, there are a few definitions for review. First, the annual pass rate. The rates are the most raw format, with only transfer and EL-adjusted tests being included, as well as failed retakes being removed. It is important to note that there are still approximately 494 Virginia Alternative Assessment Program tests, or VAPs, that have not been reported that will likely have an effect on this data as well. The APR tells us who is proficient with their understanding of the standards of, as well as the level of student mastery. The SOA, or Standard of Accreditation Rate, is the percentage used to determine a school's accreditation status, which includes the SOA pass rate and the SOA combined rate. Next is the three-year average, which is when the three-year average can be considered in place of the current year if it is higher. The four-year tag is a consequence of a school that has not performed the Level 1 range for four consecutive years. This will keep the school at Level 3 until a Level 1 is reached, but it was important to note of our schools that have cleared that four-year tag. That's an important notification. Finally, R10 gives schools the ability to move up a level if they, if they successfully reduce their failure rates by 10%. Next, we have the recovery rate. This is the percentage of students who pass an SOL test in a subject area that they were not successful in the prior year. And the recovery rates tell us how many students are moving forward and passing SOL tests. Finally, there's the growth rate. This is the percentage of students who have shown growth from the fall-to-spring SOL assessment in reading and mathematics in grades 3 through 8. Now let's look at some data. Starting off with reading preliminary annual pass rates. This slide shows both graphically and in the chart form on the bottom, trend data of reading pass rates from school year 2019 to this year's preliminary data. As a reminder, the red bar represents both school year 20 and school year 21, when there were no comparable data available. As seen with this data, the pass rate is estimated to drop by 1% as compared to last year, which will be 6% lower than pre-pandemic. All subgroups show slight declines except for Black, SES, and White subgroups. NPS trends are similar to trends seen across the nation, with reading scores, as noted by Education Week in an October article, noting the declines in NAEP scores across the nation in reading, and more recently by the nation's report card in a June posting, pointing out that 13-year-olds across the nation show declines within all five percentile levels in reading as compared to 2020 results. This tells us that reading is still in decline and a needed area of focus across the nation as well as in Norfolk. This slide has graphical data and table representation of this year-only preliminary data. The green bars represent the annual pass rate, the blue bars represent the SOA adjustments to include growth rates. The blue percentages at the end of the bars are the estimated SOA combined rates. The blue star represents where subgroups saw improvement in pass rates from the previous year, and the yellow star represents improvement in the SOA combined rate over the past year. While the Black and SES subgroup stayed level, the White subgroup showed improvements in the pass rate, and the English learner subgroup showed improvement in the combined rate. As a comparison, this slide has the same data layout, but for last year's data. And the following slide is the 2018-2019 data. And you'll note the multirace doesn't have a combined rate, because it wasn't, it wasn't calculated at that time for that year. And this slide shows the three-year comparison for the all-student subgroup on one slide. Although the pass rate is 6% lower than pre-pandemic, the combined rate is still equal to pre-pandemic. Just to note, the two years represented by the red lines in the bar graph are the ones without comparable SOL data. And this slide has the reading test data over the past four years, which includes SY, school year 21. However, as a reminder, those are not comparable data, as there were no expedited retakes or SOA calculations due to that being the first year of testing after the pandemic. And this, this data is the same data but for writing. And then, for accreditation purposes, the, the VDOE combines reading and writing to create an English score, and this table represents those combined data. Moving on to the mathematics data, the information is presented in the same format as reading. This slide represents the annual pass rates over the past three years, and the red line represents the two years with no comparable data. Although the pass rates are still below pre-pandemic rates, they improved in all subgroups except for students with disabilities. As a reminder, there are still the 494 VAP assessments to be reported, which will have an effect on the SWD pass rates in mathematics as well. Looking closer at this year's preliminary data, all subgroups except for students with disabilities are showing improvements in pass rates, and the English learner subgroup is projected to show improvement in the combined rate as well as the pass rate. And here's the data from 21-22. And the data from 2018-2019. And then we move to the comparison of the all-student subgroup over the past three years of comparable data. And again, although the pass rate shows improvement, the combined rate is estimated to be a little lower than last year, as fewer students met the growth requirement. And here is a similar chart for our math data representing the past four years of data. This slide shows the data comparison for science, and we don't have all the demographic breakdowns, because there's, it's not reported by the state that way, it's reported as an all-student subgroup. And as a reminder, the science data does not include growth, therefore the, the annual pass rate is what's being represented. This year, the preliminary data shows improvement in science pass rates as compared to last year. And here is the internally calculated chart for the trend data that does include our subgroup data. And the same is for history, where the breakdown is just the annual pass rate, and we can see a slight improvement over last year's data. And following is the chart with the demographic breakdown that's internally calculated. The preliminary data shows a great deal of positive movement for our schools. Showing significant improvement in preliminary data and moving from Level 3 to Level 2, the following schools saw improvements in math or science within either the academic achievement or achievement gap areas: Booker T. Washington and Lake Taylor High Schools, Coleman Place, Ingleside, James Monroe, Richard Bowling, and Sherwood Forest Elementary Schools, Lake Taylor School, and Southside STEM Academy. Equally as significant is the movement from Level 2 to Level 1, which is projected to be accomplished at 10 schools: Chesterfield, James Monroe, Lindenwood, Ocean View, Tidewater Park, and Willard Elementary Schools, as well as Granby, Lake Taylor, and Maury High Schools. And the largest level of growth that can be seen is from a Level 3 to a Level 1. Four of our schools show this outstanding level of improvement in their preliminary data: Booker T. Washington and Lake Taylor High Schools, as well as J Cox and Richard Bowling Elementary Schools.
Yay!
I tried to pause there. A few additional highlights seen in the preliminary data: 52% of our schools saw improvements or stayed the same with their reading annual pass rates, with an average increase of the improved schools being five percentage points. 76.2% saw improvements or remained the same with the math annual pass rates, and an average increase of eight percentage points. And 85.7% of our schools saw improvement or remained the same with science annual pass rates, with an average increase of 13 percentage points for the schools that showed improvement. 30 schools are projected to be at Level 1 in both reading and math. Students in English learner and socioeconomic status subgroups saw the largest increases in math scores at 6% and 7%, respectively. Also, our students with disabilities saw improvements in science at all grade levels except 8. And finally, here's the reporting timeline from the VDOE on the data through September. Note, the final accreditation data will not be available until early September. With this timeline, we're projecting to be able to provide an accreditation update to the Board in October of 2023. Before transitioning into STAR data, there are a few SOL documents that were uploaded to provide school-level data for the Board. The 22-23 Preliminary Performance Report by School provides a school-by-school data report for preliminary performance in English, math, and science. This data also projects the level for each performance area includes the preliminary four-year tags. The performance level trend data by school is a, is a by-school report for the current preliminary data and level for school quality indicator alongside the data for 18, 19, 19, 20, 22, 23, and the 23-24 accreditation years. This should offer a comparison as to how schools are performing over time within each school quality indicator. Additionally, this year, the four-year trend data charts for each subject area were also uploaded with the preliminary data. And now we'll move to some STAR data. This slide shows the number of students in each grade level and the participation numbers and rates for reading and math. As a division, the reading participation rate was 91%, and the math participation rate was 92%. We can see it was higher at elementary and a little lower in the middle school level. And now let's look at the reading results. This slide shows the trend data, the percentage of students within or at or above benchmark range from the fall to spring for the past six years of comparable data. Although there are positive trends from the fall to the spring, grades 2, 4, 7, and 8 all have lower percentages this spring as compared to the students who took the assessment last spring. This data shows the current year reading data with differences from the fall to the spring for the percentage of students scoring in the at-or-above range by demographics. Take note that the grade levels go across the top horizontally, and the years, or the demographics are vertically. A few highlights from the data: Although grade 5 had a lower percentage of students on benchmark in the fall of this year as compared to last year, there were a higher percentage on benchmark in the spring, showing greater amounts of growth this year. There were small declines for the percentage of students on benchmark from fall to spring this year in grades 6 and 8. And all subgroups in grades 2, 3, 5, and 7 saw increases in the percentages scoring in the at-or-above range from the fall to spring of this year. And now we'll transition to STAR mathematics data. Here is the trend by grade level for the STAR mathematics assessments. All grade levels, except for grades 7 and 8, saw increases from last year's spring rate, so we've seen improvement from year to year with our math scores. And this is the current year data by demographics and grade, and as with reading, this data is only from year, from this year, by grade horizontally, around the top, and demographic vertically. And a few highlights from the, the math data are that grades 2 and 3 showed large improvements from the fall to the spring STAR assessment with the percentage of students at or above benchmark. Also, the percentage of students moving to being on benchmark from the fall to spring was higher than 2019, however, the overall percentages are still a little lower. Finally, all subgroups except the Asian subgroup in grades 2, 3, 4, 6, and 7 saw increases in the percentage of students scoring in the at-or-above range from the fall to the spring. And the school-by-school, the school, sorry, the by-school-by-grade level STAR reading and math data was also uploaded aboard docs for your review. And now we'll transition to PALS, which focuses on early literacy. To determine if a kindergarten student is identified for needing assistance, there's a SOME score that includes rhyme awareness, beginning sound awareness, alphabet recognition, letter sounds, and spelling. The maximum score a student can obtain is 92 points. If a student scores 28 or below in the fall, the student is identified as needing additional assistance. assistance. If a student scores 82 or below in the spring, they're identified for needing additional assistance. Notice the projected amount of growth within the assessment windows, so expected growth is 54 points within the year. Here is the data for the percentage of students identified in the fall and the spring assessment windows. In looking at the all-students group, there were 2,171 students tested in the spring, and 24.8% were identified, which is down 2.7% from the fall. So not only did they meet the expected growth, but they grew further. Two subgroups of students increased the percentage of students being identified, and that was our students with disabilities and Black students. Here is the trend data of the percentage of students identified from the fall to spring by demographics. All of the subgroups showed declines in the percentage of students identified in the spring as compared to last year. So again, year over year, we saw less students identified in the spring this year than we saw last year. And here's the breakdown of each task and performance from fall to spring, including the change in cut scores. All areas showed a decrease in the percentage of students identified, with the greatest amount of change being in alphabet recognition. This graphical representation of the kindergarten students' movement in each range band of the SUM scores is exactly what we want to see. The growth in the 80 to 89 and the 90-plus band was significant for all of our students, so we shifted them all right, exactly what we want to see in this data. For our first-grade students, the SUM score in the fall consists of spelling, word recognition, and the pre-primer level, and letter sounds with a possible total of 90 points. And the fall cut score for a student to be identified is 40 and below. In the spring, the letter sounds is dropped, and the focus is on spelling and word recognition to the first-grade level. The total a student can obtain is 68 points and must get at least 35 points or else is identified as needing additional assistance. All subgroups in first grade showed declines in the percentage of students identified from the fall to the spring, so all showed more than their grade-level improvement. And here's the trend data with the percentage of students identified from the fall to spring by demographics. This is the second year in a row where all students have shown decreases in the percentage of students identified in the spring from the fall. Additionally, the percentage of the students being identified are decreasing year over year.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. White. This data shows reading level from the fall to spring for first-grade students. In the fall, nearly 53% of the students were at the lowest level, which is readiness. Just over 40% of the students moved up from that level into higher levels, with the most gain being in the third-grade-plus level. 20.8% of our first-grade students scored at the third-grade-plus level at the end of the school year. So first graders scoring at the third-grade-plus level increased by 14% nearly. And the last set of data is second-grade PALS data. The fall SUM score for our second-grade students is based off spelling, word recognition at the first-grade level, and letter sounds with a total of 94 possible points and a cut score of 34 below for the students to be identified. In the spring, the assessment is based off spelling and word recognition with a total possible score of 76 points and a cut score of 53 or below. For second-grade students, all subgroups saw declines in the percentage of students identified except for our students with disabilities, which were just under 1% increase. And here is the trend data by subgroup. All subgroups performed better this spring as compared to last spring. Again, in second grade as well, we're seeing declines in all subgroup areas from year to year in our PALS identified data. Again, looking at the reading levels for second-grade students, there is significant upward movement, with 54% of our second graders finishing the year at a third-grade-plus reading level.
That's a collapse.
On that right column, we like to see those negatives on the bottom all the way to the higher positive numbers, or on the top all the way to the higher positive numbers on the bottom, because that's showing the shift of students to a higher level of reading within that year of tested data. And this final piece of data shows the trend comparison between Norfolk and across Virginia for grades kindergarten and 1. For the second year in a row, our first-grade students outpaced the average level of growth seen across the state.
Great.
A few PALS data highlights that include that all subgroups in grades kindergarten and 1 have shown declines in the percentage of students identified in the spring over each of the past three years, and the all-students group is within 10 points of pre-pandemic levels. All subgroups in first grade showed declines in the percentage of students identified from the fall to the spring. 79.3% of first-grade students were below the pre-primer level in the fall, and only 37.4 were below the pre-primer in the spring. Finally, second-grade students have shown declines in the percentage of students identified in all subgroups from the spring of 2021 to the spring of 2023, with the all-students subgroup being within 5% of pre-pandemic levels. So some ramifications of the data. So going into the second full year, or third full year of school-level data monitoring meetings will bring some upgrades to the meetings. School-level data meetings will include consistent and frequent coaching of best-practice instruction through consistent classroom observations with verbal and written feedback. At the meetings, observation and professional development implementation will be a part of the regular discussion. This will lead to how data is being used to drive instructional practice at those meetings. This level of proactive intervention and support will be monthly for all Level 3 schools and some Level 2 schools, and the rest will be meeting every other month. The expectation will be for principals to lead the meetings to discuss needs based on data they've already reviewed related to classroom assessments, division-level assessments, formal assessments, and formative assessments and student work samples. The data meetings will also include classroom observations to inform real-time adjustments and professional development that is needed to meet student learning needs. And some further implications.
Implications.
Thank you. Of the data include: Within all core subject areas, the preschool pacing guide has been aligned to the early learning development standards. All pacing at all grade levels has been revised to include remediation time throughout the year instead of at the end just prior to SOL testing. Curriculum teams have incorporated additional formative assessments at each grade level for additional real-time data at the teacher level. All long-term substitute teachers hired prior to the New Teacher Institute will be paid to attend the three-day New Teacher Institute. And mandatory professional development opportunities will be focused on data use to drive small-group instruction, reading and writing across subjects, culture-responsive teaching practices, and coaching for instructional improvement. With a focus on early literacy, we'll include sending a cohort of preschool teachers through the Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling or Letters support training, PALS early literacy tutors at all elementary schools and preschool sites distributed equitably based on the school's need, preschool classroom libraries and readiness bags for all families that include at-home reading materials, a revised Grade 2 phonics curriculum, the Super Kids phonemic awareness resources in all kindergarten classes, linking phonics and emergent reading resources throughout the pacing guides for easeability of use for teachers, revised Grades 3 through 5 documents to provide improved planning and instruction guides, and an emphasis in Grades 3 through 5 on the use of on-grade-level text to build reading comprehension. Furthermore, in secondary literacy, looking at the secondary level, there will be a continuation of graduate classes on reading instruction for our middle-school English teachers that are offered to them, monthly data collection and progress checks at every middle school throughout the year, a restructuring of the middle-school support blocks to include small-group remediation and targeted skills supports, professional development on the Pearson Understanding Scoring to build capacity alignment with the VDOE writing standards, additional alignment to digital content to curriculum and pacing guides, and writing portfolios that follow students from year to year, as well as a revised secondary curriculum. With mathematics, the curriculum resources are being updated to better support new teachers and long-term substitutes. Daily learning objectives and formative assessments have been created for teacher use within the curriculum, additional collaboration across departments to share instructional strategies, a revised middle-school support block to include small-group instruction, additional review and alignment of unit assessments and professional development on the new math standards as next year is a crosswalk for their implementation. And finally, for science, the unit assessments are being revised, implementation of recommendations from the curriculum review, a continued partnership with the Jefferson Labs for Grades 4 through 6 and Grade 8, a new collaboration with ODU for project-based learning, and the use of educational technology to meet the needs of diverse learners, and science engineering lessons are incorporated as well. There will be professional development for elementary and middle-school teachers on hands-on science lab kits, and revised pre-tests for both 5th and 8th grade students to better assess prior learning. I thank you for allowing me to present this data and stand ready for questions and discussion that you may have.
Thank you. Dr. Gabriel?
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong, your team, Dr. Poehl, for the presentation. Very thorough. Excellent work on the early childhood learning growth that we are seeing. Of course, those foundational skills are going to hopefully pay off as we see grades 3, 4, or 5 down the road. So excellent work with regards to that. And I can, as a parent myself, I can see the progress and the hard work and the change that has been made with the learning taking place at those particular grade levels. I would like to say publicly to all of the teachers that have put in so much energy and time these past school years, especially coming out of the pandemic, those who have reached out to parents, those who spend extra time putting together those data portfolios, those who pay close attention to students who are slipping, I want to say thank you to them because it matters. It matters to parents who get phone calls. It matters to that student. And so for those teachers who are putting in that extra effort, I want to say thank you. Because looking at the data right now, there are definitely areas where we have a lot of improvement to make, but the rubber meets the road between the teacher and the student. And learning needs to continue to be fun and enjoyable for our children. And the more that they feel that they are enjoying it, and it's a pleasurable experience, and that they feel like they can, and there is someone who believes in them, that's what's going to give them that positive energy in order to continue to succeed. And so I would say that in looking at the data comprehensively, it's that relationship between the teacher and the students and that classroom dynamic. And then I'm going to piggyback on that. When I said those teachers reaching out to the parents, the parents have got to be involved. Absolutely, the only way we are going to close the gaps, make the achievements the way that we want to meet them is whatever the situation is with parents, guardians, we've got to bring them along in the process. And so whatever you all can incorporate in your monthly meetings with regards to engagement of the parent, please try to expand upon that. And yesterday, we had a joint meeting with the city council. We have lots of opportunities before school and after school that I know that we are taking advantage of tutoring, mentors, and things like that. Whatever we can do to build upon those processes for when the kids are outside of our buildings, because we can only control what happens inside, whatever we can do to work on those measures, I say at this, it's always all hands on deck, but really, right now, it really is everyone needs to be involved because we want to see those exciting trends in early childhood carry on throughout. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
Yep. Thank you, Dr. Martin. Thank you, Dr. Poehl, for the in-depth presentation. I really appreciate all the hard work you and your team have to put all these data tables together for us to review, and there's a lot here. So I think this is the first of many conversations that the board will have to review, and I hope the board will really digest the information here. And I look forward to having conversations very soon around developing our board priorities and goals for the year going forward so that we can hold ourselves accountable for moving the needle for our students. I think, like yourself and Dr. Birdsong and the team, I see some bright spots, like with our early literacy program with our PALS data, and I see some spots that I think we're all a little disappointed with, not a little disappointed, but probably quite disappointed with. I know for me, you know, the SOL data as well as the STAR data throughout the year are of concern, and specifically with our subgroup data. And I want to ask specifically, you know, especially with our students with disability, you know, throughout the presentation, there's a lot of areas where I heard except for students with disabilities. And so even where there might have been some progress, you know, that group in particular seemed to stand out, and you can see that in the data. So since we don't have a whole lot of time to talk about, I want to ask specifically, you know, what we are doing to support our students with disabilities and how we're going to monitor progress for that group? What accountability measures are we using? What are we doing? Because I know that was a group where we do have a lot of vacancies with our special education teachers. And what can we do now to be ready for the school year to support our students with disabilities, to intervene, to get them going where they need to be?
So I think that's a great question because I think nationally, we see that same exact trend with our students with disability. Not only do we own that in Norfolk. And one of the first steps we've taken for next year already is in the development of our professional development plan, and ensuring that our SWD supports are not just for our SWD teachers, but they're cross-thread with core teachers as well, and that they're also shared with principals and assistant principals for accountability of implementation, so that everybody knows what we're looking for, whether it's specially-designed instruction or how we're collecting data through Rethink and how we're making sure that we're supporting the IEP goals for each and every one of our students. And then, you know, beyond that, the specific professional development for our students, for our teachers specifically, for our students with disabilities, on additional supports, on how we can redesign instruction to meet their needs, but still meeting the standards needs as well, which falls under the specially-designed instruction, and how we continue that work. And then an increased collaboration between our Learning Support Special Education Department and our Curriculum and Instruction Department with curriculum development to place those into curriculum, place different SDI objectives into curriculum placements throughout the year where we've seen traditional lower data points.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Because I, you know, this is more to the board, but, you know, I'm going to be advocating really hard to be including intentional focus on our subgroups, but specifically including, you know, our students with disabilities as, you know, an interim or an indicator for success for whatever we choose as our overarching goal around that, because I do think we need to be intentional with our focus, you know, on that subgroup, because I think without it, we might, you know, lose focus. And so that's something I think we need to pay close attention to. And in these presentations, I think it'd be great also to have a better understanding about what's working, what has been working well, like how we've seen the growth that we have seen for our students and what hasn't been working, and how we adjust for that. The other piece that is of concern that I would like to learn more about is, and I think we've talked about this before too, is our middle school. And I think that's a concern for everyone, is when I look at the reading math, you know, across the board, but really, you know, if you can't read on grade level, then you're not learning. And so that's a problem. So 6th through 8th grade, you start, you know, it's the pass rates, the STAR data, I mean, it's just pretty vivid what's going on there, and I want to know more about that. So it's, so I just want to know more about that, and I hope we can have, like, maybe a middle-school-focused discussion at some point. So Chair Dr. Martin and Mrs. Moore Buffalo, if that's something that we can hone in on and have a deeper discussion around, I would really like to do that at some point. around, I would really like to do that at some point. Let me see, I'm trying to be more concise than I usually am here because I do have a lot of questions, but I am going to let my colleagues talk, so I'll, you can come back to me.
Anyone else?
If I have more questions.
Nope. Okay. Mr. Jordan?
Just a couple of things. On slide 52, when you were showing the PALS Norfolk to Virginia comparison. Can you just walk me through the last two columns, just so I make sure I'm following?
Sure, sure. So the, let's go through the last three is probably easier for me to go through. So our, the, our kindergarten is the top, the top row of data. In the fall, our students, 73% were at or above grade level, and in the spring, 75%, so we saw 2% growth. Where the state was at 77, then 84, they saw 7% growth, so they outpaced our growth.
Okay.
However, in first grade, we went from 59 to 61% and the state stayed level at 33, 73 and 73. So we outpaced their growth. So even though we're still below the state average, we're, we're closing that gap.
Okay. Yeah, so that, you know, we always, you know, I always have this thing where I want to make sure that we are showing the growth, which I support and applaud. But I also like to see us continue to push the envelope in terms of overall expectations for, for our students. So like in the last instance, so we outpaced the state by 2% in terms of growth, but when you look at the state's 73% versus our 61%, we're 12 points behind the state average. That's the state average, correct?
Correct.
So throughout the presentations, we've, we see some of that. And so what I'm looking forward to is as this preliminary data or whatever the next set of data gets populated into our strategic plan charts, really be able to hone in on have we exceeded our expectations? Have we met our expectations? Are we behind our expectations? And then be able to have conversations around, as Ms. Bessine was just saying, what do we do that exceed it? And how do we continue on that pace? If we met the goal, how do we push the envelope going forward? And if we are behind, then what are we going to do to accelerate so that eventually we can catch up towards whatever targets we think we need to hit towards the, the end four-year, five-year, three-year, wherever the, the goal may happen to be? So I think that's something that, that we can focus on. As you know, you know, this, I'm not sure where this, where the state is going. Some of you all know I was on that HB 938 committee that looked at a lot of this, not sure a lot of our recommendations made it in. But I do support the focus on annual percentage rates, even as we acknowledge the combined rates. And I think that we need to really drill down on, on the APR while also understanding how the growth impacts are, are in result. I guess I'll, I'll just leave it at that for now. I think maybe there'll be some more that'll come out when we talk about the equity report. I'm thankful for the, the effort. But again, I'm, I'm concerned that we, I don't mean just we in this room, I mean the collective we in Norfolk are too comfortable, in my opinion, with standards for our children that don't align with our peers. And I would like to see us to, to push it forward, especially in, in reading. I think we have to declare, what's the, what's the good word for it?
State of emergency.
I wasn't going to say that. Well, I was, I was trying to figure out how you declare a state of all hands on deck, whatever it is, I was trying to use some other language, but we have a reading problem. And, and I think we've talked about it for years. It's not something new. You know, I'll talk about it some more when we have conversations around unexpendant funds and so forth. I just think we've got to figure out this, this reading.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Up next, we have the equity audit review.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Ms. Buffalo, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. During the late spring and through the summer of 2022, we partnered with Fourpoint to conduct an equity review. Dr. Scott Joftis was the lead on this project with Fourpoint, and he is with us today to share the results and recommendations from the equity review. At this time, it's my pleasure to invite Dr. Joftis up to the podium.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for being here, and I appreciate your patience with us.
My pleasure.
Go ahead and start whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for having me, Dr. Birdsong. Thank you. And Dr. Poehl, thank you for all that you've done and serving as a really great liaison with, with our two organizations. I'm Scott Joftis, founder and president of Fourpoint Education Partners. We will be turning 20 in March, so we've worked with a lot of school systems. Very proud of that. And in addition to that, I recently served on the Board of Education for Montgomery County Public Schools in Maryland. It's the 14th largest school district in the country, and I'm also adjunct professor at the Graduate School of Education for George Washington University. So I just want to share sort of the context that I'm, have and that we brought to, brought to bear here in Norfolk. So I want to get started just by thanking you all once again, reminding you that the objective of this review was to conduct a high-level review of the policy systems and structures that promote or impede the success of students from traditionally marginalized communities. And by that, what we mean is talking about the students with disabilities certainly included in that, students of color, low-income students, and English language learners as well. It's really important, as you all know, for a board to understand some of the forces that are causing some of the outcomes that you've been talking about and asking questions about, and know sort of a proper move for board to take in order to, to move forward. So to conduct this review, we looked at a lot of existing information. We interviewed 34 individuals from across the system. We did a high-level review of the English language arts curriculum, and that last point was there was going to be potentially some additional interviews that we conducted this past fall, and that, that did not, that did not take place. So very quickly on the curriculum review, I won't go through all the details on this, but basically what we're looking for is sort of a holistic curriculum that's, that's inclusive of various cultures, race, gender, and ethnicities, and how much it promotes sort of a conversations around social justice and, and equity. The first big component of our equity review is mostly a quantitative look. So you, sorry. So we looked at gaps in achievement, which you've all been looking at, and I'll go very quickly through that. But then we also look at issues related to discipline, rates of discipline, referrals to special education, access to rigorous courses and programs, allocation of resources, and feeling welcomed and supported. So this first part of the presentation is really kind of a breakdown of that analysis for, on these indicators. So I'm not going to speak too much on the achievement piece because Dr. Poehl just did that, and you've seen a lot of other data. The key takeaway from this slide is that the pandemic wrought havoc, and it did that in districts across the country, and certainly Norfolk was, was no exception. Declines in both reading and math scores from 2018, 19 to 2021 were greatest among black students, Hispanic students, economically disadvantaged students, and English language learners. And the declines for these groups were even greater than statewide. So the impact of the pandemic in Norfolk was greater than in other parts of the state. The good news, which you just heard even a more recent update on, is that since that time, for 21, we looked at 21, 22, this was, the report was submitted in October, we were seeing the rebound, and Dr. Poehl went through that very well. The, while the declines were greatest for black students, according to the, the data that we looked at, for black students, Hispanic students, economically disadvantaged students, and English language students, three of those groups had the most significant gains in the following year. So that's what, and so that's resulting in a narrowing of the achievement gap. They have not rebounded as quickly for Hispanic students, we want to note that, for the 2021 to 2122 school year. And while 2122 saw significant improvements for these historically disadvantaged groups, achievement gaps continue to be very significant as we just talked about. This basically says the same thing. Math was even a more significant issue. We had the same issue in Montgomery County. I think it was pretty common across the country that math took a biggest, bigger hit. I'm frankly a little surprised by that, but it is true. But you're seeing, starting in the 2122 school year, you are seeing a rebound among all, all groups, all subgroups. I know I went through that fast, but you all just had a 30-minute conversation about that. So I want to move on to some of the other areas. So staff diversity is an area that we looked at. I'm so sorry, I'm trying to do two things at once. There we go. There we go. Okay. So staff diversity is another indicator that we looked at from an equity standpoint. Norfolk is relatively blessed, I would say, in terms of the diversity of its staff, especially in the secondary schools. Teaching staff, while diverse, is still more than 50% white, which is compared with the student body that is 20% white. But again, compared to other school systems, it, it is relatively a diverse, a diverse staff. Over the last five years, elementary schools have hired significantly more white teachers than teachers of color, and higher rates of attrition among white teachers from 2017 through 2021 resulted in a slight reduction in the percentage of white elementary teachers. Over the same period, middle and high school, which already employ a more, a more diverse teaching staff, continue to hire minority candidates at similar rates as to white candidates. And then this slide shows just kind of a breakdown at the elementary, elementary middle, which includes two of your schools, I believe, three?
Three, eight.
Right. Which is, is that three schools?
Four. Isn't it four?
Four schools. Apologies. So that includes the K-8 through 38, K-8 and 38, and then middle school, high school, and then you can see the division totals there as well. Okay. Moving on to discipline referrals, this is an area we really need to take a look at. And just a reminder, because of the pandemic, when students were out of school, we really looked at the data from pre-pandemic when it comes to the discipline, discipline referrals. I do have a slide in a bit that shows what happens afterwards, but there's some nuances there, so I'll, I'll get to that. So at all school levels, black students are much more likely, and Hispanic students are somewhat more likely than white students to be cited for infractions. And black students are cited for more infractions per year on average than students of other races and ethnicities. This is, to me, one of the more concerning aspects of it. Black students also receive harsher discipline for the same type of infraction at the elementary level. So we looked at the different types of infractions, so harassment, disruption, fighting, disrespect, and insubordination. And in all those cases, for black students were more likely to receive out-of-school suspension, while white students were more likely to receive a student conference or a parent, parent meeting. And this persisted for students with single infractions or multiple infractions, and some infractions were much more likely to receive out-of-school suspension and likely, sorry, and less likely to receive a conference or parent contact, while for other infraction, infractions, only black students received higher rates of out-of-school suspension. There is aspects to this also where police get involved, and you can see that in 2019, reported to police was the disciplinary action for 10 elementary school students, all of them black or Hispanic. These graphs just break down the data that I just referred to as far as different types of infractions by black, Hispanic, and white students. Can see the discrepancy there for out-of-school suspensions. So this is a very dense slide. It's what I was referring to a moment ago, which is the more recent discipline data. The state of Virginia, it complicated things for us a little bit by changing its code of conduct, but basically what we found were very similar patterns. We couldn't do an apple-to-orange comparison, but at the elementary level, this is for 21, 22, for nearly all of the most common offenses, black students continue to be significantly more likely to receive out-of-school suspensions. And as in past years, disciplinary actions for the same offense were applied much more consistently across racial and ethnic groups at the middle school and high schools as opposed to at the elementary schools. And black students at all levels were more likely to be cited for infractions than students of other races and ethnicities. And black students at the middle and high school level were on average cited for more infractions in the same year compared with other students. Moving on now to access to rigorous courses, this is another sort of interesting point that is very contextualized in Norfolk, as most things are. So what we found were that black students overall are underrepresented in AP courses, which we used as a proxy for, thank you, for rigorous courses. We think there's a couple of main reasons for that. The two smallest high schools, Washington and Lake Taylor, serve the greatest percentage of black and economically disadvantaged students, and because they're small, these schools offer the fewest number of AP courses, which results in less access for, for both of those groups of students. However, both of those schools do boast the highest percentage of black students taking at least one AP course. So they're getting access to at least one course, but overall, there's fewer AP courses that they're able to take, and that will be addressed in our recommendations. As far as allocation of resources goes, there's, again, a very contextualized story for Norfolk. The district does a really nice job of allocating additional staff to schools serving the highest concentration of low-income students. On the other hand, our less experienced teachers are tho, and principals are those working in those schools. So what happens from an allocation standpoint goes, we're spending less on salaries on a per-salary basis for our highest need schools because those are our youngest, less experienced teachers and principals, but we're adding more staff. So it's kind of balancing each other out, but it's an interesting way to break it down to sort of understand where our challenges are, and we're going to have recommendations for that related to incentivizing more experienced teachers and principals to remain in, in those schools. I will note, in Maryland, we had a state Maryland blueprint, which has really incent, has helped districts provide those types of incentives because it's a common problem everywhere, everywhere we go, and certainly in, in Maryland as well. So that covers both of those slides. I just wanted to give a quick summary, but you can sort of see the breakdown of the data in each of those cases. Okay. That was sort of an overall review of the most, well, in this case, it was all quantitative data. So now what we're doing is, we wanted to take a look at, we have a second part of a frame, our framework that we use to assess equity. second part of a frame, our framework that we use to assess equity in school districts. And this is more focused on policies and practices. So necessarily, it's going to be much more qualitative and based on our interviews and when we're, and when we're able to, we also do observations and, and surveys that go along with this as well. But what we also try to do is break it down by responsibility. So these first few policies and practices, you can see we identify as those being primarily held at the central office and at the board table. At the next slide, you can see that we break down those policies and practice that we believe foster equity that are primarily held at the school level, of course, with the support of the central office and always you, the board. And then finally, we break down the policies and practices that we believe foster equity at the classroom level. Of course, we don't want classrooms left out on their own. So this always assumes school and central office support in terms of fostering equity across classrooms. In each of these cases, we have some indicators, which you'll see in a moment, although I'm going to have to go through it very quickly, which show how we assess each of these characteristics. And then we rate on a rubric, you can see on the first one, on a scale of one to four, how we think Norfolk is doing in this situation. I will say that this is not scientific. We collected, we collect lots of information and we try to make sort of our best judgments based on the indicators that you can see in the second column. So for example, and I'm not going to go through each of these in detail, systemic coherence, our indicators for, for receiving a 4.0 would be, or four, would be clear approach to school improvement and aligned strategies, systems and structures. Our findings, you can see both check and deltas in each of those, is that the district is at a 2.5 right now. And we believe coherence is, is a necessary but not sufficient condition for fostering equity, because we need alignment of system structures, resources and strategies in order to, when we pull a lever for equity, we want it to have repercussions, positive repercussions throughout the district. So the district has really made nice steps, nice progress over the last couple of years in terms of really more clearly defining its approach to school improvement by, by being very clear about what the, we call them non-negotiables, but you can also think of them as sort of the key high leverage strategies that the district is using to, to drive improvement. That's, we've made a lot of really positive progress there. And we, we just sort of took away points because we're still in the early stages of that. And we, we point out some opportunities, which we'll talk about in a moment, of where those things can be even further aligned. You can see there then, we gave, I'm not going to go through each one, but I do want to highlight a best practice that we identified is around performance management and the use of monthly visits. Dr. Poole mentioned these briefly in his, in his remarks. But we really think that this is a great process to build further on, because it involves conversations with schools and the central office about what's working well, what's not working well. You all discussed that in some of your comments as well. It's a really great framework for, for moving forward. So you can see with the student weighted funding, we gave a 2.0. I can talk more about that in the recommendations. As far as the equity policy goes, we gave it a 2.0. Basically, you have one. It just hasn't yet, it's not very well known and well implemented at this point. So we'll have some recommendations there. At the curriculum level, we found at the elementary level, being a little bit farther along than at the high school level, which really relies a lot on the classics and Shakespeare in particular. And then leadership and PD, you can see we gave a 2.0. And you can see what some of the points there are as well. At the school level, access to the core curriculum, you can see that we weren't able to, sorry, we weren't able to fully rate this one, just because we weren't able to get into classrooms, see how things were happening. But based on our conversations, we felt like there's a lot of really good work taking place around MTSS. We've got some recommendations around that as well. And again, those uses, the use of, how do I say, let's call it non-negotiable again, that of really asking schools to do some, take practices that we know are successful and that are helpful in terms of getting students access to curriculum and, and being successful in that curriculum are moving, are moving in the right, are moving in the right direction. Professional learning communities, which are basically data team meetings at schools level, off to, in a relatively good place. We think those are key levers for, again, for driving equity, because it gets school teams involved in looking at data and making decisions on those data. In terms of the clear discipline policy, you heard some of the concerns there. We definitely think there's some room for growth. The reason we didn't rate this a little bit lower even is because that there was a sense from the school leaders that they felt like that there is now sort of a common discipline policy and that there is growing understanding of it. And now it's a matter of changing some behaviors. And that's hard, hard to do, especially in this kind of work. And then around the culturally competent engagement, this one, a couple of you sort of mentioned the need for getting parents involved in our kids' lives. We look for what's called community schools. Is that a term? I forget. Is that a term that you all use here?
We used to in the, in the past, I think more so than we do now. Wouldn't you agree, Mr. Jordan, since you've been on the board for a minute?
Senior member?
It depends on your definition of community school.
Okay. So community school, the way we look for it as a strategy, as an equity strategy, is a way to provide wraparound services, especially in schools that have high concentrations of low income students, a lot of, high concentration of students receiving free and reduced price meals, and working with the community, working with the parents to do after school computer programs or to make, to get them more of a sense of feeling welcomed in the schools, more involved in their children's education, and addressing needs that they may have by school. So it could be, we see some schools have a clothes closet or a food pantry where families can come in and, and help themselves. And it's, you can see why that's such a critical equity move. Again, the Maryland blueprint statewide is, that's one of the core components of its move. So this, our state is really moving pretty aggressively in that. And so that's an area that we look for when we, when we do this kind of work as well. The high impact instructional strategies are, we really weren't able to assess very well because we were not, this was coming right out of the pandemic and then coming into the summer. There's a lot of teacher collaboration time, which is really enviable. That's something that we really ask, well, not ask, we, we suggest that schools and districts really do that. And you've really got a lot of those structures in place. It's a core component of any really good professional learning system, if you will. We do think that there's some opportunities to further define. Again, I think there's, there's been this tension in this division about school autonomy versus a more centralized approach. And I think we would try to push you a little bit more into the centralization, just in terms of having an instructional framework, so that we can have some common discussion around core academic strategies. UDL principles, universal design for learning are really great for serving students with a lot of needs, whether it's students with disabilities or students who don't have a lot of resources at home. It's an effective way to, to engage them. And so providing a framework creates some common language and some common look fours that we can help promote some instruct, improved instructional practices across, across the district. And then that effective implementation of MTSS, the division has a really great framework already. And just taking that, I think, to the next level, I think you'll see that in our recommendations and making it a more consistent, non-negotiable across schools. From a cultural competence standpoint, there's, there's a lot of work in this area. It's a very heavy lift, as most of you know. There's, one of the possibilities of change, which again, will be in our recommendations, is just adding to the professional development around, around sort of best practices related to inclusion and equity. And then the use of restorative and trauma-informed practices is something, an area to look at that goes kind of hand in hand with this cultural competence, being understanding of where our kids, our students are coming from and not moving to punish right away, but really trying to figure out what's happening in their lives and why they are, in some cases, behaving or, or achieving the way they are and how, how we can address that. So what we tried to do was we took all of that, which was very detailed and wonky, and we tried to sort of present a high level sort of SWOT analysis. So for those of you aren't familiar, strengths and weaknesses are typically thought of as internal to NPS. In other words, what do we have more control over, whereas opportunities and threats are more external and we don't really have as much control of any control, but we have to respond to those types of, to those types of things. So from the, I'll start internal to NPSS, the strengths I've kind of highlighted, the achievement, which you heard from Dr. Poole, has really started to rebound again to your all's comments after his presentation, especially in that early literacy, which is really, really promising. Those monthly visits where administrators are working with school leaders, I think is a best practice that should continue to evolve. And then that approach to school improvement of, of finding that sweet spot between school autonomy, sort of letting schools do their own thing and central management. We don't want to tell them everyone to be the same thing, because we all have different strengths and, and populations. Finding that sweet spot and being very clear about where that sweet spot is. Certainly, a diverse and caring staff is one of your foremost strengths in the division. The fact that you've got a policy created and approved by you all, the board, the teacher collaboration time as a structure that can be used to really have those positive, powerful convers, instructional and support types of conversations. And then you were all sort of early, I'd say, early leaders in the social and emotional learning aspect of things. And obviously, no one's got that right. It's, everyone's sort of trying to figure it out, but I think you all were sort of ahead of the curve in, in terms of, in terms of doing that. The weaknesses, you can see, we've got the history of achievement gaps. Every district in the country has them. Unfortunately, I've called it our country's greatest shame. The gaps in access to rigorous courses, which, well, I'll talk about that in a second. And then just the concentration of inexperienced teachers and principals in our highest need schools. We've addressed that somewhat by adding additional staff, but I think there could be incentives provided to get more experienced teachers and principals in those schools. The application of discipline referrals by race and ethnicity, especially in the elementary schools, really, I would argue, sort of the number one concern that need, would really need to be addressed. And then this idea of the community school or the wraparound supports for students and, and families. I'll, I'll just summarize quickly. The opportunities, I'm sorry, I'm very cognizant of your all's time. Obviously, you've had a lot, a big infusion of federal funds. That's a huge opportunity. And that same opportunity that brought those funds is that urgency of coming out of the pandemic. You all, like every district in the country, has really raised the call to do new things, more things to help our students who are, are really struggling. And that speaks to one of our threats, which is mental health of our, not just our students, but our staff as well. And again, this is a national issue. It's not just a Norfolk issue. It's real for sure. And then the aging facilities issue, I heard a lot, we heard a lot. And the budget that is in place or not to address that from a upkeep and maintenance standpoint is, is a concern. And related to that is the declining enrollment and under enrollment at schools. So that affects us in a couple ways. One is declining enrollment, as you know, reduces our revenues, which exacerbates the problem. But then that lower enrollment also makes it much more difficult to provide the top types of after school activities, the access to rigorous courses, the choices that students have in the school that makes learning rigorous and fun and engaging, and engaging. Okay. Are we okay time wise? I can, I can stop there. Cause that, so that's, those are our findings. The recommendations are going to sound fairly obvious because I've kind of teed them up already. So I'm happy to pause there and see.
That's fine. We'll pause there. Let's open it up for questions. Anyone? Okay. Go around the room, Dr. Gabriel, and then Miss Paseen. All right.
I really appreciate receiving this report. Thank you, Dr. Birdsong team, and for, for the in-depth analysis. I want to say it's new, but it's not new. I mean, we've, we've kind of have been revealing this information as we have taken close dives into our data. So I did have some clarifying questions as I was reading the report ahead of time. And again, these are just for clarifying. And it does go first to your point of the discipline issue. As Norfolk being a, a school division that is a higher majority of African American population, when you're breaking down your data, is it, is it?
Percentage.
It's percentage based?
Yeah.
So on a percentage base, even with the percentages being higher, there is still the higher rate. Okay.
Yeah, we compared the percentage of referrals to the percentage of the population.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you for that clarification. Very reflective data. And I, and again, we have been seeing this data. And I know that there are things that the administration is putting into place, education, practice and everything, but definitely something that we need to keep our eye and focus on.
Absolutely.
When you say qualifying data, I'm sorry, when you're talking about the AP courses for the high school level. So there is the work that leads up to getting into an AP course, and then there's the AP course that's there. In your report, did you see that the pathway in order to get to those AP courses for feeder schools was not allowing them to achieve that level of getting into the AP course?
That's a great question.
Or was it just, there just weren't that many offered? Because I don't want to put courses in a building if the kids are not ready to take the course. But if it needs to be dialed back to where, okay, are they taking algebra at sixth grade and then geometry at seventh grade? And then by the time they get to high school, you have AP Calc and statistics and analysis. Did you guys go down that deep?
We did not, in that, in that case.
So I would say that's something that we need to look at then, when we're looking at, because again, don't want to put courses in a building.
No, of course.
That the kids are not going to be ready to achieve. And I, I, I'm, I don't subscribe to putting a child in something if they're not ready to achieve that level, because that's just going to discourage them.
Yeah.
But prep them up ahead of time.
Yeah.
And then see if they can do that. Third point. As you talk about the parental engagement and the cultural competency, there, there's a lot of stuff that I think about as far as parental engagement. We have an app, a NPS app.
Yeah.
We also have an student academic tracker. We call it Parent View here. You know, I guess these are just some thoughts that are running through my head to say, when, when a child is in NPS, do we have any data that says how many parents actually have the Parent View on their phone? How are, how are they tracking their child's academic performance? I'm a pediatrician and they're well visits. We go over education and they, I have parents sometimes that just bring up their grades right on there, because I ask, well, how are you doing in school?
Right.
And the kids will say, I'm doing great. And the parents are like, oh no, you're not. And they'll bring up their phone and they'll track it. And some parents have it and some parents are completely oblivious. And as a parent myself, I will tell you, navigating through Canvas, navigating through Parent View, understanding the curriculum, it's a lot to absorb when that is not your everyday, what you're doing every day. It, it's a lot of edgy speak, educational speak.
Yeah.
And so I think that we really need to kind, as we're building up our kids, we need to build up our parents too, because there's a lot of technology that's involved. And I don't know that they're, they're there. So I would say that's something that I'm kind of gleaming from your report. And lastly, the mental health aspect of it, again, pediatrician. Mental health is a big problem. Mental health is a big problem that we have, but I have to commend the division on what they have tried to put in place as far as psychologists, mental health, you know, therapists, and I would just say additional supports right now, there's a lot of vacancies.
Yeah.
There's, there's vacancies all across the, the spectrum here.
Yeah.
But what we have done is we have a very robust physical education and sports program.
Yeah.
And again, I will say it, when you have kids involved in sports, it's, it's, it's not a therapist, but it really is helping to help their minds.
No question.
Physically and mentally for some of these items. So it doesn't directly tie into your area, but I think that as we have these further conversations, again, as a board, if we can't fill vacancies with mental health providers, if we can't bring in therapists or have office space, there are other places where we can definitely make a very impressive impact on our kids. And so I would say we can focus on some of those things, not ignoring the other things, but we still have many areas that we can focus on that will help with equity.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Go ahead, Miss Beating.
I said two quick things, just clarifying. I'm not going to be real long.
Mr. Clay, go ahead, because you haven't spoken yet.
Yeah, no problem. The report, I thought I heard you say, so this report we received, what, you submitted it with October?
Yeah.
October 2022?
Yes.
Okay. The, and the other pieces that I've read through, the recommendations and see a lot of the things that I think that will be a, a really good guide for us moving forward. But I just wanted to clarify as far as where some of the data was.
I appreciate that.
Oh.
Yeah. So, so that was actually a great lead-in to my question. So the report was submitted in October 2022. So I guess I'm wondering, I guess I'm a little, this, this is a great review, and as Dr. Gabriel said, not, not exactly new information, but it's great to get independent, independent review and also detailed recommendations, such as what you've provided here. But I guess, you know, for me, it's, it's, I guess, a question of why it's June 2023 and we're having the discussion.
Why?
July, sorry, July. So I don't know if, Dr. Martin, I don't know how, or, or why it's July that we're having, because this would have been great. And I ask that because these recommendations, some of it, you know, as, as my board colleagues know, are recommendations and questions, I feel like I personally have been either advocating for, for the last year or longer, but especially during our budget season. And as, as we talked about, some of these recommendations, you talk about unexpendable funds and SRR funds, you know, and I, I feel like, I feel like I'm really supercharged because I feel like there's missed opportunities that we didn't take advantage of. And so I'm disappointed. So I'd like to, any answer to that question?
Dr. Birdsong can speak to that.
Okay.
So I, I believe it's just priorities with agendas. This wasn't a report that we hid from anyone. In fact, when I was questioned publicly about anything to do with the audit, I was very transparent in, in saying that when the board asked me to do this, I believe the previous year that we had engaged in this, I believe Valda, Valbrun also talked to the board about the work around this and the equity audit. So I, I, I just think it's simply agenda planning and other priorities. I don't think there would, there was, you know, any intentional, no, we're not going to give, you know, that wasn't it.
I didn't, I didn't say that.
I just think the board had other priorities, and here we are today.
Oh, I, I'm, I didn't say it was hidden. I, I don't think, I mentioned that in my comments. I'm just wondering, you know, that it is a critical piece of information that we have as part of our strategic plan and talking about equity and excellence, and it just seems like in it, of itself, it's a priority. So, so with that, I'll leave that there, that this is in fact a priority. And I think as a board, hereon out, let's make this a priority. So with that, this information here, along with the data that we've just reviewed, and, you know, we've, we've been looking at discipline data for years and years that have shown the disproportionality of our African-American students being at the top of, of referrals, you know, out-of-school suspension, in-school suspension, probably referred to our juvenile justice system. So I think we need to pay close attention to that. We've talked about restorative justice, we've talked about trauma-informed care, and we've just been talking, talking, talking. And we've been, you know, under the impression that practices have been taking place. And so this is a good report in showing that there is unevenness across the district. And so I think that, again, as we talk about board priorities, monitoring that in our accountability, starting next month, that we have metrics that we are looking at, that we are closely holding ourselves and the administration accountable for actual, across-the-board consistent implementation ASAP, because, you know, there's action to be taken.
Yep.
So questions with the recommendations, specifically around cultural competence, and this is a question I meant to ask with the previous, and this might not be a question for you so much, but maybe Dr. Paul. So we talked about cultural competence and, you know, our English language learners are one of the lowest performing, well, I should say, our annual pass rates for that subgroup are lower, the lowest, among the lowest. And in all of the strategies that were provided, I didn't hear a lot around support specifically targeting our English language learners or their families and communities around, you know, whether we're going to have, you know, bilingual, multilingual supports, PD. So I don't know if you can talk a little more about what we're going to do differently for that subgroup of students? Because I had, I've, I've recently been hearing a lot more, and when we did, I think it was, it was actually Dr. Martin and myself who did a community session two years ago, I think, with that population of teachers and, and students, that was one thing that really rose to the top about having support.
So that was one of the, one of the big reasons during budget season that we asked the board to separate those positions. So now, we're in the midst right now of, of posting and interviewing and hiring for a senior coordinator of ESL to help drive that work a little bit more so that can be their focus points. Last year, we added the two family engagement specialists. One is a bilingual specialist as well that works in that office. This year, one of the things I was really proud of with the department is they added the, they had Saturday sessions at the zoo, where they were open meetings for families and to be able to offer supports, bilingual supports at those meetings. We've also continued to purchase access through a telephone service that does translations in, in multiple languages for all of our meetings so that we have that. We opened up our Facebook page that's in Spanish, so we have a Spanish Facebook page as well to advocate for our EL learners. We are, we are in the works right now of doing cultural competency, professional development this summer with our coordinators and our specialists centrally, so that all of the PD sessions throughout the year that they have, it's incorporated, because it's not a separate piece. It's integrated into what we do and who we are. So you'll see differences in that as well, in, in just the general professional development as we move forward. But I'm, I'm looking forward to having, you know, I, I've, I've got lofty goals for our ESL department, all the way to one day maybe having a welcome center that's dedicated, you know, with dedicated space and everything else to, because our, our EL population is also growing, just like it is nationally, but here we're seeing a little bit faster growth.
Right.
So there are plans underway to strengthen and improve, and a lot of that started last year when we added the two family engagement specialists, and then this year when we're able to create a true ESL office with their dedicated coordinator as well.
Okay. And one last question. So one of the recommendations here as well was, as a non-negotiable, and I think it's important because it's relevant to the data too that we received, was around Lexia and Edmentum. And we've been talking about it kind of all year with some of the feedback we've received. But looking at the data from the year, and, you know, I'm still getting feedback about it, that it doesn't look like that resource was potentially all that impactful.
So we're, right now, we're working with the Lexia data from the end of the year and the SOL data from the end of the year that we just received to do exactly that, to look at correlation reports, to see the usefulness of that software as we move forward. So, you know, this, the, the data and the information for this was, like I said, when I opened it up late spring, early summer '22, where that was still a, a huge part of, of what we were pushing and what we were doing. And we're looking specifically at what is the data showing us with Lexia and Edmentum as we move that work forward. So it's, we're just not blindly pushing through it. We are actually actively right now doing correlation reports to see if there's a direct relation between how that's being used and success in, in student achievement.
Okay, so it's not necessarily a non-negotiable.
No, no. The non-negotiable is really just implementing.
Okay.
The, the curriculum and the, the curriculum and the resources that, that are proven.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No problem.
Go ahead, Mr. Shorty.
Going to speak to Mr. Jafnis?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Okay.
First, congratulations and thank you on your willingness to serve on the school board in Montgomery County. Actually, I've followed the work in Montgomery County for, for years. We actually brought in about a decade ago, Richard Collinburg, as part of our original education planning.
I didn't know he was from there.
To, to talk about some of the work that Montgomery County has been leading around, trying to have probably diverse economic schools. So I would hope there's an opportunity we can talk, talk about that, because I think it aligns with some of the information that you shared. I appreciate the report. I think we do have hyper-poverty pathways that, that we could do something about if we have the courage to do so, which, which I think aligns with what you've pointed out in terms of staffing and community supports and access to curriculum. Actually feel that I hear my father's voice in my head, which all he said to me forever was exposure, exposure, exposure. And, and so I think that when we're looking at access to rigorous coursework, we do need to provide that exposure. I think students will rise to what they have the opportunity. I think my own children did that. Well, well, not saying they did it well, but, but, but the exposure piece I think is, is extremely important. Also, congratulations on your state superintendent. I followed him a lot when he was in Texas.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, who, can you give a sense of who you interviewed? What was the breadth? I think you said you did 34 interviews?
Yeah.
Is there a, like a breakdown?
So I don't have that with me.
Okay.
But it was, it was primarily internal, you know.
Is that generally what you do?
No, I mean, normally, it's, it's a more widespread engagement. And part, again, part of it was we scaled it back a little bit because everyone at the time was exhausted. We didn't do our surveys, which we would typically do, because everyone had been surveyed to death. And we didn't do our classroom obs, we didn't do classroom observations, which we often do, which provides a little bit more context as well.
So Dr. Birdsong, maybe you, the two of you, is this a first phase or is this a, what's the?
Well, yes, it is. It is kind of a first phase. We intended to have some additional work done with this, but it, it appears that it was not a part of the contract, at, at least that's what I was told. And so we're in the process of putting out another RFP.
Okay.
To do the, the next phase of this work.
Okay. Well, that's.
That correct, Dr. Paul.
Yeah, well, I hope, I hope we can, in whatever limits that you had, it, it appears that it's some good work, and I'd like to see us deepen and build upon it.
Yeah.
I thought I read somewhere in the report, did you reference dashboards in your, in your report? I read so much stuff, I can't.
Yes, I.
Are those, were those internal dashboards? Can you give me a sense of the, the dashboards that?
So.
May have been referred to?
Yeah. And I'm going to, this is like, I get really worked up about this. So my view is that when a lot of, when a lot of systems talk equity, it's very mushy, right? Like, we need to be more inclusive.
Yes.
And my point is, that's why we talk a lot about what are our non-negotiables or our high-leverage strategies? Let's pick five or so. And then let's not only look at the outcome data, which you all do extremely well, you've got a lot of really good outcome data, but let's also define the metrics of implementation so that we don't wait until the outcome data and say, oh, darn it, our black kids aren't succeeding the way we want them to, right? So what we, what I like to encourage districts to do is to pick something like MTSS, which you guys have a great framework, it's already in most, if not all, schools. But now, these monthly visits that I was saying are such a promising or best practice, that should be one of the focus areas in my view of, okay, here's a rubric for MTSS implementation. At the beginning of the year, you were a one, now you're a two, great job. What are you doing? Like, not an accountability standpoint, what are you doing? That's great. How do we get you to a three by the end of the year, right? And then the dashboards are more focused on that, because you all have tons of the outcome data. But to me, what really drives the improvement process is being really thoughtful and systematic around those few high-leverage strategies that we want to track and, and talking about that implementation data.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess the last question, as you were, you said you heard a lot about facilities.
Yeah.
And you also mentioned enrollment. So did you have any thoughts around balancing enrollment?
So, uh, that's probably a longer conversation. I recognize it's everywhere, it's a hotly politicized subject, and I know it's certainly that's the case here, so I don't want to just sort of speak off the cuff on that.
Just as a general concept.
Do you mean sort of like?
I'm not even speaking of the diversity piece of it yet. I'm just meaning the fact that we would have one high school with 2,000 students and one high school with 900 students.
Right. From, so from a data standpoint, our, our belief is that you have more school capacity than you need, right? A whole nother, it's a whole political conversation, I recognize, is what do you, what you do about that, right? But in our view, you do have too much school capacity, and as I said, you know, that has implications for what you're able to offer. It so happens that the two schools that are the most sort of under-enrolled are also the ones serving our black and, highest concentrations of our black and low-income students. And there's obviously implications to that, that we can't provide as much of the AP courses or we can't do some, maybe some of the after-school activities. So I, I do think it needs to be dealt with, but I don't want to be too off the cuff about how I would, how I would do that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The question, is the, is the PowerPoint, is that the report or is this a presentation?
This is the report.
Okay, yeah.
This is the report, yeah.
Okay.
And then there's a, a written executive summary too. I'm not sure if that's shared or not, but I'm happy.
I just received it and I didn't get it in time to upload it on Friday.
Apologies for that.
Okay.
Yeah, but that, that is a brief written summary of, of what you all have.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you all so much, I really appreciate it.
Okay, I would like to extend the meeting to two o'clock, is that okay?
I think it's fine. I think we just have a hearing at two.
We did, yeah, so I'm just, we're going to go up to two. So, Dr. Paul, go ahead, quickly, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, good afternoon again, everybody. I'm here to present the July update to strategic plans monitoring tables. And this morning, or this afternoon, review the baseline data for the SMART goal on the workforce table 21 focused on professional development activities. So, this measure is attached to, is to increase the percentage of employees who indicate that professional development activities support them in their current roles. This question was added to the exit survey required of all divisions, division-level presented professional development, which is a requirement to complete that survey for the employee to gain their professional development points. And that's how we collected this data. And as you know, this is our baseline data, because it's the first year that we've collected the data. The SMART goal is to increase the percentage of employees who indicate professional development activities support them in their current roles from the 82.1% that we completed this year during the 22-23 school year to 95% during the 26-27 school year. And the 82.1% represents that baseline data collected again. And you'll see that we did spell out our annual targets as well. So, our goal for next year would be to reach 85% and then to continue to grow from there. And that's the only update we have for the data tables for strategic planning.
Okay, questions? Okay, and next we have the policy review, please.
Alright, so, good afternoon again. We have a few policies on here, a couple that wrap up February and quite a few from May. There are a couple I'd like to highlight for the board. First, AF, the comprehensive plan. There's an addition that takes effect starting in the fall of 2024 regarding requirements for the Virginia Literacy Act. There must be a division literacy plan for grades pre-K through eight, as well as the requirements to update and keep the plan posted and the necessary, the necessity to keep the job description and contact information for any reading specialist and dyslexia specialist employed by the division. So, it adds that to the policy. And that goes into place fall of 24, so we're a year ahead of that. BBFA, conflict of interests and disclosure of economic interests. Anyone who is required to file a state of economic interest cannot accept gifts valued at more than $100 from foreign dignitaries who represent a foreign country of concern. And that is also now defined in the policy, foreign country of concern. Also, appointed school board members are required to get training in the state and local government for conflict of interest acts, or COYA. Elected school board members have been requiring to get that, but now it also adds the appointed school boards to it. So, those, that's the change there. BCE for school board committees. It adds that the committees can expire at a time specified by the board when a committee is created into the policy. So, with the time of creation, you can put an expiration date on that committee. BDDL, this is a fully new policy. This is a, a policy around allowing electronic participation for school board committee members to their specific committee meetings. So, our school board advisory committees, which is one thing we talked about adding. This policy is similar, similar to the board's participation policy with the meeting minutes having to make note of the electronic participation. It outlines the acceptable reasons and rules for it if the meeting is entirely virtual. And this is a model policy developed by the VSB. BHB is the school board member in service activities. This just has the removal of the word elected since all boards must comply now. CBA is the qualification of the superintendent. The policy now reflects the new requirements that the superintendent must annually designate a division employee to serve as a division safety official who is responsible for receiving reports of certain criminal charges and convictions against school board employees. And then, IKF is the Virginia Assessment Program and Graduation Requirements. This policy reflects special rules designed to facilitate the on-time graduation of children of federal employees whose parents serve under orders pursuant to titles 22 or Title 50 of the United States Code. The rules require the superintendent to waive specific courses, courses required for graduation under certain circumstances and to accept testing from the student's home state instead of tests usually required for graduation within Virginia. And then, IL is our testing programs policy. It adds a line about teachers, parents, and school leaders to be provided with their students' results on SOL assessments or VAP as soon as practically possible. JG DZ and JGEZ is the student suspension and expulsion policy. And the updates here are to the policy so that any student who is suspended on a long-term basis is required to attend alternative school. Therefore, the student cannot just opt to not attend school during the period of suspension. They will have to go to an alternative placement school. And then, the last one for review is JMZ, the restraint and seclusion. There are a few language changes. However, the notable change is the mechanical restraints to the words of excluding handcuffs. The reason for this change is without having school resource officers in all of our schools, school, school security officers who have been trained, some, it, it, not, at, at some points have to use handcuffs to restrain students. The remaining policies only have legal or cross-reference changes. And then additionally, policies CMA, quality profiles, IGBI, advanced placement classes and special programs, and IGE, adult education have no recommended changes, but the board is requested to review those as we have to once every five years. And finally, regulation JJACR around student concussions has a few minor updates to it that we just wanted to share with the board.
Thank you. Anyone? Questions? Comments? Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
On the, the JGDZ, L, M, O, P policy, I'm, I'm glad that we're making that adjustment. I would like to ask if there's some way to get a memo or something that indicates how we will support and staff that policy. So, I'm supportive of the policy, but I also want to make sure that whatever the administration determines are the necessary resources and supports to implement that policy, that you can share with us what those are and then we can make sure that we are providing what's needed in that regard. Because I think we know that a lot of students have not, have chosen not to go to the alternative program. So, if we're going to require them to go, then we have to make sure it's, it's staffed and, and supported. So, I'm not asking for another presentation, but I do think before we vote on it or as we vote on it, we have some understanding of what, what the needs are in terms of implementing and sustaining the, the policy.
Okay, I agree. Is everyone ready? Do you feel comfortable voting on this today?
No.
On the policies?
The recommendation is that we have two readings because this is such a big.
Yeah, we've got to communicate this. If, if we go down this path, we have to communicate.
I guess I want to say, is, are there policies on here that we need to vote on today?
Doesn't need to be voted on. We, that's why we want to make sure to get them through tonight. And, and Ms. Tanner's actually already developed a, a community input mechanism for the JGDZ specifically. So, that we can send that information out and make them aware. And by doing it today, then August 2nd meeting will actually be the second reading of the policy. And then, the vote wouldn't be until the August business meeting.
And I was going to add that these changes, because they are so significant, are triggering the need to change a lot of the notice that will go to parents. Because they need to understand
Right.
the significance if they do not send their children. And the, one thing I have in, in the process of dealing with in terms of support, Mr. Jordan, I have requested from the city attorney that someone be assigned to in advance, assuming that the policy is passed, to help train your truancy officers. Because it may not happen, but there's at least a possibility that we'll see significant more work for them in the early stages in terms of bringing parents into juvenile court.
It's a big shift.
Yeah, we had a big in-depth conversation in, in committee regarding it and looking at all those other things that were talked about. So, that's why we're, it was very much recommended that we do the two readings and then have time to make sure we got communication out.
Right, okay. Dr. Dr. Martin? Dr. Paul, and I guess for the committee, did you also talk about having a public comment period to, to actually receive public comment on this specific policy?
So, we, we talked about the first and second reading and we talked about the digital, you know, way of doing it. Then, we would assume at the business meeting in August that they would be able to come and make comments since it's the second reading period for it. But we didn't do a specific, we didn't talk about doing a specific public comment just for the one policy.
Okay. I guess because it is such a big change, you know, because I'm just, I'm just thinking through the communication, what our communication plan will be. Or maybe that should be part of whatever you bring forward to us, like Mr. Jordan was talking about, was what the communication plan will be around making sure that everyone is aware of, of the changes. Should, should the, yeah, should the trial, yeah.
Focus.
Yep, that's right.
And there was discussion about the communication before, but then also with the board was to approve this. Would this have enough time to be placed in the student handbook and some of these other communications? So, that was discussed. And I know that Dr. Kimsey was a part of that as far as what we'd be able to do.
But we also know in that big handbook that certain things don't always get, get read. So, or we kind of take for granted the things that we think we know already that we kind of skim over. So, these big changes, just to make sure that people are aware. Yeah, parents are aware, guardians are aware. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me hold all your time this afternoon.
Yes, as always, naturally. You always have the longest presentation. Okay, so up next, we have the safe schools, the school board safe and secure schools task force, Mr. Mallory. And Lauren's not even here. I know she's very, she wishes she could be. Go ahead and start when you're ready.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Buffalo, Superintendent Dr. Burson, and school board members. I'm Tim Mallory, Director of Public Safety and Security Service for Norfolk Public Schools. And I'll share with you the work of the school safety task force. During this presentation, I'll share with you a brief history of the task force, along with current security initiatives, areas of concern identified by the task force, and its recommendations for next steps.
Okay, let me interrupt you for just a second. Do we need to hear the history of the task force?
No, can we just get to the recommendations?
Go ahead.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
The Norfolk, the Norfolk School Safety Task Force work began in 2019-2020 school year. Unfortunately, the work of the task force was suspended due to the pandemic and the closing of schools in March of 2020. Now that we've fully reopened schools, the task force reconvened on January 17th, 2023. And those on the task force include school board members, Ms. Camson, along with representatives from community partners from the Norfolk Police Department, Sheriff's Department, Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Security, Norfolk Emergency Management, Community Mental Health, and finally, school administrators and school security officers. In 2020, the task force established collaborative groups with our city partners to identify concerns and solutions related to school incident response, infrastructure integrity, and enhancement, and to conduct root cause analysis of disruptive student behavior. The goal of the task force was to review areas of need, to provide feedback, and commendations on current security initiatives, and to make recommendations for enhancements. As has been widely reported as a result of the pandemic, we have experienced a shift of student, in student behaviors in addition to an increasing balance in our community. That impacts schools and an increase in mental health concerns that impacts overall school safety. As we know, these changes have not just been experienced only here in Norfolk, but also in our entire region and across the country. This, this is before y'all have some dates. The, the dates that we met to discuss school safety concerns were January 17th, February 16th, March 23rd, April 20th, and June 22nd. Since the creation of the task force and even during the task force pause during the pandemic, the school division has continued a proactive approach with implementation of school safety and security initiatives. For example, all schools now utilize the Raptor Visitor Management System to screen all visitors, which allows to identify sex offenders from all 50 states and prevent their interaction with students or staff after initial screening. The Raptor system also enables us to conduct background checks for all volunteers in NPS. Furthermore, we'll be using the Raptor Emergency Management Module to manage drills and school emergencies. This, this capability will further enhance our ability to ensure that all drills are being conducted in accordance with Virginia, in accordance with Virginia Code. In addition to allowing us to effectively manage incidents using the Raptor dashboard. As you're aware, the school division has ordered weapons detection systems for all schools, school sites, and athletic football stadiums. The systems have begun arriving and training was held on July 5th through 6th at Grammy High School, one of our summer school sites for school security officers and school administrators. Additionally, training opportunities for those that were unable to attend the initial training will be scheduled this summer to ensure all administrative school security officers and staff who will screen individuals using the new system. Currently, all high schools have been updated, school security and surveillance systems. In addition, the technology department has developed a five-year plan to outfit all schools with updated security surveillance equipment. Walk-throughs were conducted at all elementary schools in June of 2023 for the next phase of the initiative. School security officers now have been equipped with an electronic incident reporting system, Omnigo, for all security incident reports. The system provides a way to better track the data from daily school-based incidents that require school security officers intervention and provides us a way to review that data streamlined and to streamline our security response and adjust personnel assignments based upon needs at each site. The system also provides easy-to-use professionally-developed reports to share information. In addition, all schools are equipped with video Aphones at the main entrances. We have established a script for our staff to use to vet visitors prior to allowing visitors gain entry into our schools. Furthermore, we have worked with the deputy city attorney in development of process for banning visitors from school property when they have egregiously violated school board policies of Virginia Code. During the 2022-23 school year, the division established a division-wide threat assessment team. The team trained school administrators, counselors, and school psychologists on how to effectively conduct threat assessments. We continue, we will continue to work very closely with the Norfolk Police Department to respond to all potential and actual school threats. The task force has recommended additional training and consistent, frequent crisis, crisis team meetings to support school safety and security for all staff. Therefore, in August of 2023, we are planning and implementing a safety and security day to provide in-depth training for all building administrators. This day-long retreat would include training on conducting necessary drills, including lockdowns and evacuations, and will include training on the implementation of school crisis plans, including the training of building staff of how to respond when incidents occur. During the day-long training, administrators will also practice responding to potential incident, incidents using tabletop scenario exercises. Furthermore, we'll provide training on the new Raptor Emergency Management Module in August as well. The task force has also recommended partnering with human resources to provide training to new staff during onboarding and through online modules as staff enter service with NPS. In order to improve communications related to safety and security, the task force has recommended that we work with our Department of Information Technology to identify areas within schools that have poor radio and cell service and to develop solutions to those issues. In addition to working with our Department of Communications to develop a formal written emergency communications plan. As a result of the task, task force work, our technology department is collaborating with the police department to provide them with access to the new surveillance systems to assist the police when responding to school emergencies. We're also collaborating, collaborating with the City of Norfolk 911 Center to provide training on the use of the emergency channels on the school radios. The task force has also identified implementation of consistent division-wide student identification card in addition to updating staff ID badges and ensuring that all staff are consistently wearing them at their schools and sites. We will work with the Transportation Department and continue to provide security training for bus drivers. The school division will continue to provide annual training on threat assessments. And finally, the task force recommend, recommend that all new schools and renovations should consider the design of the main entrance of schools to have a vestibule like those incorporated in the architectural design at Southside STEM Academy, Camp Ostella, and Larchmont Elementary School. To help address social-emotional needs, the division is also implementing a social-emotional universal screening for students K, K-12 beginning in fall of 2023. The screener also comes with CASEL-aligned resources and modules for social-emotional learning and support implementation at the school and classroom levels. The screener will enable us to note trends at the division, at the division, school, and individual student levels in order to provide appropriate and proactive support for students. For instance, for instances when tier-one social-emotional supports are not sufficient to meet students. For instance, for instances, when tier-one social emotional supports are not sufficient to meet students' needs, the, the Division is also implementing an online mental health care coordination service designed for K- twelve school divisions. This service will allow school teams to provide a warm handoff for more extensive services in the community when needed to support students, social emotional well-being, and when more intensive, intensive supports are needed for individual students. And I stand by for any, uh, to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question, Baba.
Go ahead.
One, I'd just like to thank you all for the, for your work.
Mm-hmm.
Um, appreciate what the administration has done. From a, from a board perspective, I have concerns. Uh, because I, I think we need to clarify, uh, I have no idea who's on the task force, how it is formed, uh, how recommendations come back to the board or go directly to the administration. And I think we need to have some clarity around, I, I, I really feel like this should be called the Superintendent's Task Force and allow the superintendent to work within, um, her administrative team to do the things that they think that are necessary and bring recommendations to the board around policy and budget and so forth. Uh, but if it's gonna be a board task force, then I think we should have an understanding of who's on it and what the process is for recommendations coming to the board, to, to the administration. Because it sounds like you've been doing, doing a lot of great work. I think it's a lot of work that you probably would have done anyway. Uh, but I'm thankful to those who participated. Uh, but I, but our process, um, I think needs attention because I could never find out who was on it. Couldn't find out when the meetings were, didn't know if the meetings were public. Uh, at one time, we started the task force, we had parents and organizational members on it, almost going back to the whole equity conversation that we had. And so I, I just want to state those concerns again so that as we move forward, we're clear on how task force, at least board task forces, get established and, and operate and what their roles and responsibilities are. But I appreciate all the great work that, that the administration is doing in this regard.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. Um, do we have time to just, do we need the presentation of the financial report? Has everyone reviewed it?
The finance report, we gotta approve it.
I do have to leave.
Okay.
So I have to step out.
I got a question. Can we take a motion?
Take a motion.
So, Madam Chair, um, in lieu of the, um, we've all received the report. I'd like to move for adoption of the finance report. We'd love to see you present.
Wow, a second.
Great job for your first presentation.
For your first one. The quickest report ever.
It was out of sight.
We'll see you in August.
Yes.
I would, I would just like to note the
Report ever.
You gotta finish your vote.
I know.
Better call the question.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a second.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Just one, the one discussion point.
Oh, yes.
I do just would like to note the twenty-five million dollars in Kerry Ford funds. And so we need to talk about that.
Yes, I was gonna say, speak for yourself. What is that? I haven't called the question.
Okay, Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Okay, thanks, everyone. Meeting adjourned.